Six oh three, do we do have a quorum at this point, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, then I'm going to call this meeting to order. Um, let's have a roll call.
Absolutely. Uh Chairman Erasmo Villarreal.
Present.
Commissioner José Táiz.
Present.
Commissioner Jorge Dominguez. Commissioner Rafael Duñez.
Present.
Commissioner Abraham Lugo.
Present.
Commissioner Johnny Arvise. Commissioner Raúl Ugalden. Commissioner George Beckelheimer. Commissioner George Beckelheimer.
Oh, sorry, present.
Present. And Commissioner Carlos Flores.
Mr. Villarreal, did we have, we have any members call in?
Dominguez.
Yes, we received a message from Dominguez and Commissioner Johnny Arvise to be excused.
Okay, so right now I've got one, two, three, four, five.
We're five. That is correct.
We, we do have a quorum.
Yes, Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do know that Dominguez has to be excused and Arvise has to be excused. Uh, Mr. Flores, did he ask to be excused or did we hear from him?
Well, I've seen his, his post.
I know he's in Colorado, right?
Yes, sir.
Right, I believe he had called earlier in the week to ask to be excused uh for that trip.
Okay. So then can I have a motion to excuse uh those three people?
So moved.
We have a motion in a second?
Second, Commissioner Lugo.
And I was gonna ask you guys, whenever you make a motion, state your name after that, it'll be a lot easier for the record keeper.
Beckelheimer made the motion.
All right, thank you. Second by Lugo, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the meeting of May twenty first, twenty twenty.
Mr. Chairman, Beckelheimer moves to approve the minutes.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Rafael Duñez second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any citizens' comments at this time?
Just a reminder, Commissioner, to give it about thirty seconds, there's a lag, and also while we're doing this, just a reminder to everyone, if you're not speaking, I think everybody's doing a great job, but just a reminder, if you're not speaking, to mute your mic, it really helps with the feedback and the echo. We do have planning staff that's ready to take any calls that will occur. They're standing by, they will notify us if there are, so you don't have to ask if there are, is somebody waiting? Our staff will, will automatically let us know we've got somebody for this or for future items where, where we do only have one public hearing.
Okay, very good, then it, with that said, Kirby, I'm going to move the meeting along. The next item is review and consideration of the following master plan. Um, and this is the reconsideration of College, College Heights subdivision master plan. The intent is residential and commercial, the purpose of this revision is reconfiguration of phases, all right, who's gonna present?
Rafael will be presenting tonight.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for the record, Rafael Villarreal, quick overview, the applicant, Cesario Porras, Solar Development Partners Limited. The engineer, Porras Nance Engineering, property description, seventy-four point seventy-two acre tract of land located west of U.S. Highway eighty-three and south of Don Camilo Boulevard. The zoning is B three and R one A, the proposed use is commercial residential, and the proposed lots are four hundred and three. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed master plan, it, just as a quick note, in this proposed master plan, actually, the last phase that they're coming in is one of the items that's uh coming in for consideration, which is the unit six, everything else is already uh pretty much almost on the ground.
Okay, and unit six is how many lots?
Uh, unit six will be, second here, uh, unit six is twenty-one lots.
Okay, okay, so that's the revision to the master plan, just.
That is correct.
Adding unit six, is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Uh, these are staff comments from planning. Environmental. And the proposed motion to approve or deny.
Any questions from the commissioners? With no questions. What are the wishes of the commission?
Remove that we approve this item, but staff comments.
All right, we have a motion from uh Beckelheimer.
Sorry.
And, any second?
Duñez second.
We have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody who's opposed? Then the motion carries. The next item that we have is a public hearing and consideration of the following preliminary replat. This is the preliminary consideration of the replat of lots four, five, and six, block fourteen oh three, eastern division into lot four A, block fourteen oh three, eastern division. The purpose of this replat is to combine three lots into one. This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone on the line who is willing or wants to speak on this public hearing?
We will, if you would allow us, we'll, we'll.
Sure.
Presentation, then we can put it on the slide at the end. Well, the, the call-in number for the public.
For this, for this item, the applicant is the Alon Juan Sara Carrasco Family Limited Partnership. Engineer is tech engineers, zero point forty-four acre tract of land located south of the East Lane Street and west of Northern Mimo Avenue. The zoning R one, proposed use is residential, and the proposed lot is just one lot going from three to one. This is the general location. Aerial photo. And the street view. And the proposed plat.
Oh, we, we've heard this one before, right?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Hey Ralph, can you put back the street view, please?
Certainly. That house is actually no longer there.
Okay, I was, I was questioning, I was gonna ask you, I said, okay. Yeah, basically, you, you've got vacant lots, the, the lots are vacant.
They are now vacant, yes, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Now, like Commissioner Beckelheimer said, we, we, we heard this item, I'm gonna say, three or four months ago. Back then, it was three lots, it was converted to two lots, is that correct?
That is correct, the initial was going from three to two, and now it's three to one.
Is there any specific reason why they're? You know, switching from, from two to, to one?
In my conversation with the engineer of record, he stated that they are proposing to build a larger house and do not want to build over lot lines at all. That's why they wanted to go from the three to the one instead of the three to the two.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the commissioners for the planning staff?
None.
All right. If that's the case, then uh is there anyone on the line who may want to speak for or against?
I understand the applicant is not available today, was not available to speak, is that correct?
That is correct.
But we will, excuse me, we um. We will put it on, oops, we don't have that slide. We'll put this number up if, i- if and when you decide to open for a public hearing.
Now, we aren't heard all this, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's really, if people want to speak against this, probably more important than yes.
And I don't disagree, I mean, uh, anybody who wishes to speak against this item, do we have anybody on the phone?
Again, there's a, about a thirty-second lag, if you would like to.
Surely, we'll wait.
Time. And our staff will let us know if we have anybody that's called in.
Kirby, on these items that require uh potential citizen comments about for or against, there's no way to queue them up earlier?
Unfortunately not, I mean, we could have, the difficulty, well, the challenge would be, we could have multiple staff here manning multiple lines, but then we have multiple phone numbers that they'd have to call in, but they wouldn't have any way to know which number, you don't have a, a, that just calls. So they would just be waiting if they both happen to use the same number to call. The best is that um they call in, and if they're not ready, if we're not ready to hear that, I am, that our staff takes a note that they called in, who they were, they were for or against.
Well, that's a, that's a good method, and then we can just telephone them once the item comes up so that then they're on the line. That's actually, you touched on something there. They can indicate beforehand that they want to speak, and then we take down their number, and if the agenda item's about to be pulled up, then we reach out and they're ready, anyway, just think about that.
Yes, sir. Jason, do we have anybody calling in?
No one at the moment, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pretty willing to take a motion if you will.
Yes, go ahead.
Move that we close public hearing and, and uh recommend approval of this, subject to the comments.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Commissioner Lugo, uh, second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anybody against? If not, the motion carries. Thank you. The next item is the um consideration of the following uh preliminary plats, preliminary replats. Item may preliminary consideration of the plat of College South subdivision phase six, intent is residential. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant, Cesario R Porras, Solar Development Partners Limited, engineer of record, Porras Nance Engineering. Three point two eight four eight acres, located west of U.S. Highway eighty-three South and south of Don Camilo Boulevard. The zoning is R one A, the proposed use is residential, and they're proposing twenty-one lots. This is the general location. Aerial photo. Street view. Proposed plat. And staff comments from planning and environmental. Proposed motion.
Okay, this, does any, anybody in the commission, any commissioner have any questions for the staff? Or the engineer? If nobody has any questions, can we have a motion?
Beckelheimer moves to approve with staff comments.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Herr Lugo, a second.
We have a second from Commissioner Lugo. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? If not, the motion carries. The next item that we have is the preliminary consideration of replat of lots three, four, five, six, seven, eight, in uh block sixteen, seventy-nine eastern division into lot eight A, block sixteen seventy-nine eastern division, intent is commercial. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for this item, I, I don't know if you'd like for me to read it into the record, however, we did see, receive written correspondence earlier today from the engineer of record to have this item tabled, time certain.
Very good, then. Uh, if that is a request, we have a motion to table.
Beckelheimer moves to table this item.
We have a second.
Lugo, a second.
Okay, we have a second, all those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Carries, thank you. Next item that we have is consideration of the following final plats and final replats. Final consideration of replat of lot ten and eastern half of lot eleven, block nine twenty-two, eastern division into lot ten A, block nine twenty-two, eastern division, the intent is residential.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ralph?
Applicant, Francisco Reyes, engineer of record, Daniel Gomez, engineering. Property description, eight thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet, located north of Cortez Street and east of Mendeolac. The zoning R one, the proposed use is residential, and it's for one lot.
Okay.
General location. Aerial view. Street view. And the proposed plat. And the proposed motion for the commission.
All right, any questions from any commissioner? With no questions, do I hear a motion?
Beckelheimer moves to approve this item.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second? Who seconded the motion?
Táiz.
Táiz, okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries, thank you. The next item that we have is the final consideration of the replat of lot seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, and seventy-six A, block two, North Creek subdivision, to lot seventy-three A, block two, North Creek subdivision, intent is commercial.
General overview for the Sergio Guzmán of Guzmán Investments Group, applicant, engineer of record, Kim Lee Horn and Associates. One point two four nine acre tract of land located northwest corner of Hillside and McPherson. The zoning is B three, the proposed use is commercial and one lot proposed. General location. Aerial view. Street view. And proposed plat, this is the, you may remember, this is the location for the proposed Raising Cane's Restaurant.
Yes.
And the proposed motion for the commission.
Any questions from the commissioners? If not, what, can we have a motion?
Beckelheimer moves to, to approve this final replat item.
We have a motion, a second.
Con Duñez.
Duñez has a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries then. Next item is the consideration of an extension of the following final plats and final replats. This is a consideration of an extension to the final plat approval of Cuatro Vientos North subdivision, unit nine, the intent is commercial. Make a motion, Táiz makes a motion to hear the ne- this item and the next one together since they're both extensions of final plat approvals. You have a motion, do we have?
A second.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, anybody against? The motion carries, all right? Táiz makes a motion to approve said items. We have.
Beckelheimer seconds.
And a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries, all right, we, now we're down to director's comments. Nice.
Wow, that was, uh, we went through it pretty fast today. And I, I won't take too much more of your time, I just what, did want to report on a few things. First, I wanted to say, and it's not on here, that thank you to Commissioner Joinus, he made time for us this week for us to sit down and, and provide him with the training that we provided the, all the commission members previously. And we learned a few things from him, he's got an interesting history. It has a, a background in law as well as in trade, so we're lucky to have him as part of the commission and, and grateful that he made time to go through the training that everybody received. I wanted to report on a few things.
Kirby.
Yes, yes, sir. Right now, with the way that zoning cases work, and the way that I understand it's been for a long time, is that we have one cycle per month. Although the planning commission meets typically twice a month, we only, you only hear zoning cases typically once a month. And that we only accept them in that once a month cycle, which means if somebody misses the deadline, they've gotta wait one month, and if council doesn't meet, has some absences like they do in July, uh, they're not meeting for the first council meeting in July, or the first mon- Monday in July because of the holiday. And sometimes you end up waiting even longer, so now that we've got two people on zoning that we're training up the second person, the goal is that, that I've discussed with our staff, and what I'm also discussing with y'all, is that we are gonna implement within the next three to six months, because we gotta get everybody trained up, and we, we're going to have two zoning cycles per month, and we're potentially gonna have zoning cases at each meeting, now. While that may make the first meeting go longer, it'll make the second meeting go shorter, because we won't, as you noticed, we had that one meeting where we had so many kids, it lasted three, four hours. Hopefully that will avoid that in the future, it's one bonus. Number two, if somebody misses a deadline, they don't have to wait a month, they'll just have a couple weeks instead, it'll speed, speed the application process up. And also help us as staff that, in the busiest times, we don't have this huge time of work, kind of evens things out a little more for us, so. Because we're doing some things with getting applications all digital, getting all our files digital, having a, being much more organized in how things are collected together, one of those things I'll show you in just a second. After that, we're able to track things better, and, and we're, we're not worried about losing track of all the noticing that we have to do, so that's our goal. Any thoughts from the planning commission on that? Are you okay with having zoning cases in the future, three to six months? At both zoning, at both uh planning commission meetings?
Kirby, I believe that's a very good uh move, because, you know, when you're trying to get a business going, or any, any kind of a situation going, to be able to only go once a month, it really is tough, especially for anybody who's developing. Most people who are developing are on an interest clock, and by losing two weeks to a month, that's a lot of money. So I think it's a good move, personally.
Thank you, it requires a team effort on our part, and, and so we're working towards that, we'll keep you updated. One of the, one of the reasons we can do that is because the organizations, we're, organization we're doing on our part, let me show you something that we've been working on that is now implemented. Just exit this presentation. So if you go onto our website, this is the planning website for the Cilorado, cilorado.com slash planning. That's how you get here. Uh, you'll see some different buttons where you can access different information, like our agendas, that, that's where you can go to get our agendas. Also, a recent button we added is this application status button, right here on the top right. Now, we've been sharing this with engineers and applicants, now we're sharing with the commission. If you click on this, it takes you to a landing page that explains, these are all the applications that are accepted in the planning department. All the different things we do, now the, the things we do the most are applications for zone changes and application for new plats. But there are some other things that we accept as well. What this will tell you is, for each of these categories, if you submit an application, you want to check on the status, you can either click here and click on this link, or you can click on the tab at the bottom. When you do that, for example, with the zoning cases, it'll take you to this tab where now you have all the information, now by the way, all this information is public, anybody that would go to a planning commission meeting would act, would get this information. So none of this is personal information. Uh, this is all publicly available information, but if you had one of these zoning cases, if this was you, you could check on the status of this, see where it's gone, see what's that, well, I won't take too much time, but I'll just show you that all the information for the application is here. And then, as the, uh, who has it been assigned, what's the status of the application is, when the deadline is, when the date is for planning commission, and then when the date is for, for intro to city council and the final for city council. And then what happened, for instance, this one was denied, so it stopped there. That information's there, as well for plats. The status of plats, and anything that goes to a board, board of adjustment or historic, and then any other application that we accept. Having this information here not only helps us, it not only helps uh us be organized, it also keeps us accountable, all this information, you can track how long it's taking or where we're at on it. Anybody can access this information, it's really good for the applicant, the engineers, they really, this was received very positively, they're, they're grateful to have this information. Uh, know where the status is, sometimes commissioners ask for the status of things, you can also check this, all you have to do is go to our website. Click on this button, application status, and anything you want to see what the status of it is, or where it went after it, it went to the planning commission, you can see what happened, do it here. Any questions about this?
I think that's a tremendous tool that you just put up there, Kirby, congratulations.
Very nice.
Again, team effort here, we, it's something we can do because we're working together, and we have a goal of becoming, getting online, getting digital, and increasing the amount of time it takes for us to process things, and making it easier for people to get information, so they don't have to call in all the time, they can access it themselves. So we're, we're doing this as a team, and that's the only way we could do it.
Sure, good, very good.
Very nice.
Uh, next item is the um Recode Laredo, just an update. As you recall, we gave a presentation to y'all previously on the status of that, we're continuing to work on it, we're down to our last few weeks of getting input internally. We're, we've been meeting every Friday, we're gonna meet every Friday for the next few weeks, getting city staff, and we're going line by line through the land development code, through the subdivision ordinance to get input from all the city departments. We're going to have a three-day workshop in, in uh in July, in the second week in July, if any of y'all are interested in attending that, as long as we don't have a quorum. Um, but if we do, we can notice it, we would just need to know in advance, but if any of y'all are interested in attending, all are part of that workshop, you are more than welcome. Uh, but, but that's primarily meant for city staff, and uh we'll be sitting down with the whole project team, with, with the consultants in the planning department, city departments, we'll be going through again, all the, all the input that we had. That will give the project team everything they need to then start drafting the new code. That will take approximately two to three months, then they'll have a new code to, to get back to us for feedback, as soon as we have that, we're gonna bring it to the planning commission. And city councils will to get a look, so look, expect this fall to get a first draft of the new land development code, the uni- new unified development code, because all of it will be in one place, subdivision ordinance, sign ordinance, everything in one place. It'll be called our unified land development code.
Kirby, please make sure that we all get an invite to that event.
Oh, yes, sir, you will, we will present it to the planning commission. We'll, we'll have it as a, a notice meeting, so that everybody can participate in that, and if you miss it, we'll make sure you, well, we'll make sure you get a draft, but we'll also present it.
Very good.
Anybody have any questions about Recode Laredo? Okay, finally, meeting in person, we, we didn't get much, we got a little direction from council, they, they asked for all of our, for most of the boards and commissions to start meeting again, well, we were already meeting. But they did not state anything specifically about whether we had to meet in person, so I, I just wanted to mention to you that we'll, unless we receive direction from the council, otherwise, we will leave it up to the commission to decide how you meet, and, and what we heard from you is that this is working for you, I would just say, uh, to understand that the um, it's difficult for the public. I know you know that, I'm just voicing the concerns that we've heard from the public that, that, and it's been difficult for them, even though we've tried our best for them to give the amount of input they would like. That being said, unless we hear specific direction from the council, we're gonna leave it up to the planning commission as a body to decide when you meet, when you decide to meet in person, or whether you continue to use uh this online tool.
Kirby, from my perspective, uh, as a chairman, I value input a lot from citizens, and I, I know it's a real difficult process the way we're doing it right now for citizens, especially on zoning cases. Uh, for engineers and everybody, so for me, I would not have a problem going back to meeting in person so that we can have some public, have a little easier way to get input into whatever subject matter they're dealing with, that's my personal opinion. I guess I would ask the rest of the commissioners what their personal opinions would be on meeting in person.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, this is Beckelheimer. I would like to see some, what the, Kirby, what your staff would do, or how the city would design uh, some type of a hy- hygiene process as everybody enters, or what, what that would look like. I think, e- even, something that's better than how it was before, obviously. And uh, if something is reason to be done, I'm, I'm more than ready to start going to the chambers again.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll speak with uh management, and, and um I have the opportunity to bring it up at the next council meeting, but, but um at the last meeting, they, they, or we, we received a memo where they're asking us to meet. Asking many of the boards and commissions to be meeting again, and utilizing WebEx or, or Zoom to meet, which we're already doing. We can, we can either wait for them to tell us when to get back to normal, or, 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 otherwise I can then go to management and say it.
Kirby, you are, you said that, I'm sorry, I apologize, you just said, you said that already a couple times, what I'm saying is, our, our chairman would appreciates that the fact, the fact that the public likes to come and, and speak to us, and I agree, I'm really saying, can you think about how you're gonna engineer that so that there's some hygiene protocols in place?
Yes, sir, we'll do that, and we'll talk to management and see if, if that's okay, and what that would look like, and present to them our plan, present it to you, and. Yes, sir, we'll do that, and we'll talk to management and see if that's okay, and what that would look like, and present to them our plan, present it to you, and of course, you'll, as a board, have the final decision on what we do.
Do you think you can work on that, uh, as quickly as possible, I mean, our next meeting is in a couple of weeks.
It is, but we've already, we're already in the process of noticing for that, so we won't, we wouldn't be soon, it'd probably be, we'd have to wait a little bit before we implement this, because the notices go out in advance.
So when are you sending the notices out?
Rafa, is the deadline tomorrow for the notices? I believe it is.
The, the deadline is tomorrow, and the notices have been printed already.
Okay, well then, that's okay, let's just go ahead and try to work for the first meeting of the month of July, to see if we can somehow figure out a way to meet in person and have the public there, and maintain our social distancing requirements of six feet, uh, but at least conduct something in person where we can have the public, uh, attend the meeting, and figure out, uh, like, uh, Commissioner Beckelheimer said, protocols on, on how we would have these meetings, and, and how we would perceive to have the public there, and, and and what kind of formats it would use to have social distancing in the audience or whatever.
Yes, sir, we'll look into that, we'll report back at the next meeting.
Very good.
You, you brought up a, something I also left off that I should have. I've heard that our first meeting in July has typically been very difficult for y'all to form a quorum. Um, do you want to take a straw poll now to see who will be able to meet the next meeting, which is, Rafa, let's see, what's the next meeting on the calendar?
It's July the second.
July the second, so that.
No, Kirby, there, there was only five of us here right now, that, that you should, Mr. Chairman, we probably do an email polling or something, but right now would be fair to the other people that are missing.
Yeah, and, and at this point, uh, Kirby, I don't see much of a problem with the July second, at this point.
Okay, the only reason I.
And if anybody's gonna do anything, it's gonna be that Friday on, not on the Thursday.
Right, well, the reason I'm asking now is because as a quorum, you could make the decision now to, uh, if you wanted to, to.
I agree with Commissioner Blackerheimer, I think the easiest thing for us to do is, we don't have the the other members present, just send out an email, advise everybody that our plan is to see if we can meet in person on the third, on the second of July, and, uh, if they would be amenable, or if they're, or if they're gonna be able to meet. I sure hope they will, because if we're going to go to new formats, the new planning, uh, format in terms of zoning cases, when do you propose to start that at every meeting?
That will be three to six months from now.
All right, okay. Okay. Now, I would say that, you know, I always put myself in the position of the person who is making an application for either plats, replats, or whatever they need to do, and anytime we hold those, uh, particular situations up because of, we can't, don't have a quorum, or we can't meet, it, it's the economy's tough right now for everybody, and for us to not meet and give somebody either approval or denials, to me, is, is, is kind of tough right now, let's see how we can help everybody. I know everybody's been hurting, uh, and to me, it's, it's something that we need to figure out, we need to really meet, to be honest with you.
Yes, sir, understood. All right, well, with that said, thank you once again for your service on the commission, you don't get paid to do this, you each volunteer to participate on the time commission, and as staff, we are really grateful we have you to, uh, process, so thank you very much.
Okay, very good, motion to adjourn.
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Beckelheimer, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.